Welcome everybody and thank you for logging into this Zoom meeting conference of the Audit and Standards Committee. I'm the Democratic Services Officer for this meeting and I'm assisted by my colleague Jay Bell, who's the host for this virtual meeting. We'll proceed to introductions and housekeeping in a moment, but just a couple of points to note. This meeting is a public meeting and in alignment with the new regulations which permit meetings to be held by remote means. This will be live streamed for the public to view. To make the meeting run as smoothly as possible, can I ask that participants in the virtual room leave your microphone on mute when you're not speaking? And please, can you raise your hand to the camera if you do wish to ask a question or speak? Only on mute though, when the chair indicates that you are able to speak. If at any time you lose the ability to hear or to be heard, please alert the chair or the host as soon as possible. You may see other people looking away from the screens at times, but this is because other people have got separate screens which they're viewing the papers on. As members and officers are mainly working from their own homes, you may hear distant sounds of children, pets and household noises from other rooms. I'll now hand over to the Chair of the meeting, who will give welcome and introductions. Thank you.
Thank you, Sarah. And Sarah has now taken over the role of being our Support Officer. So she's very brave. Okay, we'll start with introductions and I'm councillor Sean Edmire Richards. I'm the Chair of this committee and I'm the councillor for Manor, one of the councillors, sorry, for Manor and Castle Ward. Simon.
I'm councillor Simon Clement Jones of Beetham Green Ward and also Deputy Chair of this committee.
Thank you. Marouf?
Sorry, sorry Chair. Councillor Mohamed Marouf and I represent Crooks and Crosspool Ward.
Thank you. Diane?
Thank you Chair. My name's Diane Hurst and I'm an elected member for Richmond Ward.
Josie?
Thank you Chair. Hello, I'm Josie Patrick-Camer, councillor for the Hillsborough Ward. Thank you.
Angela?
Hi, I'm councillor Angela Dent, so councillor for Brumhill and Sharrow Vale.
Thank you. And Alison?
Hi, I'm Alison Howard. I'm the independent co-opted member.
Thank you. So that's all the members of the committee. I'll now come to the officers. Ruth?
Thank you Chair. Ruth Matheson's Finance Manager within Finance and Commercial Services.
Thank you Jill. Sorry Gillian.
Thank you Chair. Gillian Duck with Director of Legal and Governance.
Dave?
Hi everyone, I'm Dave Phillips, Head of Strategic Finance.
Ryan?
Thanks Chair, I'm Ryan Key with our Director of Finance and Commercial Services.
Hayley, who's actually an outside officer, sorry.
Hayley Clark, Senior Manager, Enston Young.
Thank you. Claire?
Claire Sharrett, Senior Finance Manager, Strategic Finance.
Thank you. Janet?
Hello, Janet Dawson, Ex-internal Audit Partner from Enston Young.
Thank you. Tim?
Tim Armstrong, Head of Special Educational Needs Council.
Thank you. Andrew?
Good afternoon, I'm Andrew Jones. I'm the Director of Education Skills at the council.
And Linda?
Chair, I'm Dean Pontiff, Senior Manager for Internal Audit Risk Management and External Funding for the council.
Thank you. Did I get everybody? Right, nobody left out. Thank you. So are there any apologies? I don't, oh, Adam Hurst isn't here, so can we give Adam's apologies?
Yes Chair, I've also got an apology from the independent person, Jo Cairns.
Thank you. Exclusion of the press and public, I don't believe we have any items for that. Item four, declarations of interest. None apart from the fact that we're all very keen members of this committee, aren't we? Minutes of the previous meeting, which I'd just like to thank Simon for chairing as I was away following the death of my father. So if we turn to page nine, can we agree these as a true record? Well, I can't. Can we have some thumbs? Thank, thank you. So the committee has agreed the minutes as a true record. Are there any matters arising? Page nine, page 10, page 11, page 12, page 13. I had one here. On 7.9 where councillor Mohamed Marouf felt it was important that we had robust officer training, I just wanted to add to that to make sure that there will be a session for officers on working in a political environment. Because I think sometimes working for a council is utterly baffling until you get to know the members. So is that possible, Gillian?
Yes Chair, as you know, I'm working with the LGA at the moment and that's one of the courses that we're talking about working, working in a political environment for our senior officers.
Brilliant. How senior? It would be quite good if we could, sorry.
Yeah, sorry, it's not specific. So we've got, we've got the scope to be able to take it to as many officers as we need. I would suggest it's all officers who get involved in report writing as well. So that's probably as junior, an officer as I probably, as I think it applies to. It's probably the ones who are politically restricted, to be honest. So there are, you know, once we get over a certain grade, all officers are politically restricted. So they, they as a minimum should, should have that view, that training.
Thank you. And page 14. Okay, so that's minutes and matters arising. Just gonna have to tear up my agenda here, sorry. So our next item is number six, Education Health Care Plan. This was a report which we requested because we had had concerns following the Ombudsman Report on how special education was being progressed and supported by the council. So are you going to kick off Andrew or is it going to be Tim?
It'll be me please Chair, if that's okay. And then Tim can contribute. And in particular, we're going to keep our input relatively, relatively brief because we assume that the committees read the paper and that would just obviously allow enough time for the committee to answer questions, which I've no doubt that they will have. So in particular, we recognise, we acknowledge that actually the level of complaints that we have in relation to sending the city is, is too high. And we have entered into, as it states in our report, we've entered into a number of processes to look at a variety of things in order to reduce that. Culturally, in the city, things have become relatively adversarial. And we wish to actually address that by seeking to not only make the necessary improvements, but also to communicate those to parents and to people in the, in the city in order to help to build confidence in the service, which I think will then help to lessen and to reduce the number of complaints that we have. Complaints obviously range from a variety of different types and they escalate and they reach different levels within that. From, you know, the most simple, in terms of relatively simple complaint into the service through to legal and formal processes such as send tribunals. In the city, we have a higher than average proportion of children who have special needs, that's higher than the national average. But in terms of children who then have a formal educational healthcare plan, we actually have a lower than average proportion. So we have these two odd things. We have a higher, higher number of children with special needs in the city, but a lower, a lower number of children for whom that's been formally recognised through an EHCP. Obviously, there are different, there are different stages of that and there will be children who've been identified in school with special needs without an EHCP. As part of that, in terms of the schools register within that. And details of that is contained within our, within our report. Complaints tend to focus on a number of areas. That includes the timeliness of educational healthcare plans being issued and we continue to work on improvements in that area in order to, to lessen the impact of that. Complaints also focus on the placement that is being offered to a child or is wishful by a parent. Sometimes that includes request to place a child out of the city or in independent, in an independent setting. And sometimes the complaints start even earlier than that, which is just as to whether a child should be formally assessed or not. So we have that full range of those things within that. We've been working to improve processes around that. That includes more direct and personal contact with parents through telephone calls rather than doing it in a more formal way through emails or in writing. And that means making things more accessible for them. We've also provided and led training in schools in order to support them in terms of the identification of children with special needs in a more timely manner as well, in order to provide the reassurance that's needed from that. We've put in place a number of quality assurance processes, both to look at the quality of the plans themselves, but also quality assurance processes and a greater focus on performance. So every month, we have what's known as a Director's Performance Clinic now, that's been in place since last July. And that's where we take a look at the data in terms of the complaints from the, from the centre team as part of that. So we've got better data on that as well. We've made some additional appointments into the service and we continue, for example, at the moment to augment the educational psychology service in order to provide additional capacity within the city. And we continue to review the capacity that we have and the capacity that we will need, not least of which, given that we have got a higher than average number of children with, with special needs across the, across the city. One phenomenon during the last 12 month period has been a significant rise in the number of children who are electively home educated. And that also includes some children who have an EHCP who are also electively home educated. The, the rise has gone from about 460 children pre-pandemic to about currently to about 660 at the moment. So that's a significant rise in that population. But in reality, the majority of parents who have taken that action since September cite concerns about safety in their children in schools. And that's despite our best efforts to, to reassure them as part of that. Nevertheless, throughout the pandemic, particularly the first lockdown, children were risk assessed by, by our service, working with other colleagues in the council to ensure that their needs continue to be met wherever possible, in whatever shape or form. During the initial lockdown until August, a number of legal processes, including the need to issue EHCPs according to the timeframe, were suspended by the government, but that was then reintroduced in September and we've been working back towards that since. The report on page 24 sets out a table in terms of the number of complaints against the SEN SARS team. That's the team that actually worked through the assessment process and conducted EHCPs. The, the worst year was in 2019, 20, which was also the worst year for tribunal appeals. But in this last year, that's actually fallen back again. And we continue to have a watching brief through our Director's Performance Clinic in terms of complaints that we have. We continue to work hard to have a grip on the timeliness and the issuing of educational healthcare plans. And we're doing more work at the moment also to review the annual review process, EHCPs, once they've been in place for a year, then are subject to an annual review. We continue to review our communication practices. We worked with the Parent Care Forum to review and revise the letters and the formal things that we send out to parents and also to consider other ways in which we can actually develop better communication with parents as part of that. And we continue also to monitor the impact of the pandemic for those children whose education has been disrupted. We're doing some work at the moment in relation to in relation to tribunal, tribunal process and tribunal appeals. And that includes reaching out and working with a number of other local authorities for whom they've either already got better rates or have managed to reduce their tribunal rates. And recurring theme in the research that we've done in those local authorities is about the quality of communication. It's about having consistency with case workers so that you don't get children moved from one worker to another throughout the process. It is about actually the council itself and officers involved in inclusion and send were taking matters through the tribunal process as far as possible rather than relying on legal representation or on our lawyers. Some local authorities don't use their lawyers at all as part of the tribunal process. And we continue to look at that research and to, to develop our own practice in terms of that, in terms of that area. So I'll stop there Chair and obviously wait till there's any, any questions or any additional information that's needed.
Right. Does Tim want to add anything to that or is Tim just here in case we ask hard questions?
I'm here probably to answer some of the easier questions, hopefully.
The hard questions. Right. I think when, when we had our pre-meeting, Andrew, we did say that we found this report a wee bit disappointing because it wasn't as fact-filled, I think is probably the best way to describe it, as Audit Committee likes to get. Because we're a committee, I think, as I said to you, of KPIs and process and action plans. And what we really want to hear is, okay, we got this wrong, this is what we're doing. And these are the time scales for how it's going to happen. Because we, we, we know that those are the things that parents want to hear. So can I just ask that? You know, tribunals and things, going to a tribunal indicates that we've, we've, we've lost the confidence of a parent to some extent. So what are we doing to address these issues? And is that you or Tim?
I'll bring Tim in, but I just wanted, I wanted to acknowledge that, yes, any tribunal, even if it is one where that where, you know, we're clear, you know, that this is in the best interest of, interest of a child to contest something or in relation to the resource that's being requested, it's right. You're right Chair, to highlight that it, it indicates a breakdown in the communication between the council and the family. And that's why we're absolutely determined to reduce these. Tim, do you want to talk through some of the specific initiatives that we've got to reduce the tribunal numbers?
Yeah, so I think the, the, there's two parts to this. One part is actually when a tribunal lands. So obviously, we, we are still receiving tribunals where parents are in dispute with us in terms of what, what our decision-making is. And there are essentially four areas of decision-making that a parent can dispute. So that is either the decision to assess for an EHCP plan, the, for an EHCP needs assessment, the decision to issue an EHCP plan, the decision to cease an EHCP plan, or the content of an EHCP plan. And at the moment, the majority of tribunals that we have cover content and specifically section I of the EHCP plan, which is about the placement where the child goes to school. And then the, so what we, what we're doing is working very hard to try and say, when they come in, how do we address those? How do we, so we've put in place a senior inclusion officer, our assistant service manager is taking oversight of that, working closely with our legal colleagues to say, how do we make sure that as soon as a dispute lands, whether we've been aware of it or not, we're trying to evaluate again the decision-making that we've made and review that in light of information that comes. Now, sometimes we're able to look at that and go, actually, let's make a different decision. And we are making decisions about SCN needs on a weekly basis in line with information that we're presented. Sometimes it's a straightforward decision. Sometimes it's about a decision where a school has said they aren't available and what the parent wants and is asking for has told us that they, they don't believe that they can meet needs. More often than not, what we actually find is that additional information comes to light through that process. So for example, a parent might commission a private report that says something different to the advice that we've had previously. Or there might be an area raised that we've not looked into previously and hasn't been raised as a specific area of concern. Or where a young person might be on a waiting list for some form of health assessment in some form. So what we're doing in terms of as, as we work with tribunals coming in is saying, right, what are the areas of dispute? What are the reasons why we've said no to what the parent wants? And what are we doing to address that? So we've already, for us that have already reduced the number of tribunals that we're seeing as active tribunals that are progressing through to actual hearing. We, we've reconfigured the working practices within that service and the working practices with our legal colleagues. We're looking at that and we'll continue to review whether that's effective or not. Because the moving and passing of cases has caused us some challenges in the past. We've worked and have already started working, doing more work with our health colleagues in terms of information and assessments that are outstanding and missing. And when we identify that there's something else there. So those are all things that we're doing based on the fact that tribunals come in. Critically though, as Andrew says, when we get a tribunal appeal and a parent decides that they wish to appeal to the decision that we've made, that's the point where we, we failed because we've not managed to come to an agreement with the parents. So the work that we're doing is exactly as Andrew said, which is improving the level of conversation. So we now, at every point of an EHCP needs assessment, and particularly when there's a decision not to agree with something that a parent wants, making sure there's a phone call to discuss through and a very rigid plan and robust plan by the decision-makers as to what and why. We are ensuring that we're working with our, our advice givers to look at the quality of advice they give. So often what we get is from parents saying, actually, we don't believe that information about our child reflects what we think is their need. And so we're working in terms of our quality assurance of that. And that's across education, health and care practitioners and our education providers to say, how do we make sure that the information that you give from which we then make a decision is as robust as possible? We have had some tribunals come through because we haven't had the space and the capacity and the provision available to us. So we regularly will get a tribunal request for a place in our special schools where our suggestion would be that the child's needs might be able to be met within a mainstream school. Because the special, when the special school is telling us they don't have the space. But we're then looking at what, what is the, how do we define and be really clear on the thresholds as to when we need to say to that school, we're really sorry, you're going to have to accommodate that. That's against the backdrop of continued challenges within our specialist sector where they fall. So all of the improvement work that we're doing around, around once tribunals are in, is the work that we're doing. And what we're doing is we're reviewing that. Andrew and I are reviewing that on a regular basis. As he said, through our monthly performance clinic and so it's coming back in month by month. And performance clinic in terms of the practice. And then, but then the general practice of assessment and decision-making is an ongoing improvement piece of work for us across the city, remembering that it isn't just about one team doing that assessment themselves and making decision, but they're drawing lots of bits of information together and lots of challenges together from within which to make that decision.
Okay. I'm going to ask a couple more questions. Marouf, you're first on my list. But I'm going to go first. Oh my gosh, this thumbs up, it's catching, Simon. Why do we have more applications than the national average? What is our backlog at the moment? What is the difference between different parts of the city? Are there areas of the city where parents have sharper elbows? Or where parents are more clued up? Or is it a general thing across the board? And then why, if we have more applications than the national average, why do we have fewer with plans? Is that because we're not keeping up to speed or because we're doing something different?
I'm hoping I've got all of these right as I go. So apologies if I miss any of them in answering. In terms of application to the national average, we don't necessarily have more applications for EHCP needs assessment than national average. We have a higher, but we do have a higher percentage of overall children than the national average. So we're, we're about 0.5, 0.6% of our total school population have SCN needs more than other areas of this, than other areas of the country. Very difficult to tell. A lot, a lot of SCN needs can be linked to levels of deprivation. But then we've got other areas of the country that have got higher levels of deprivation than us. We specifically in Sheffield, there's some data looked at recently around the number of children with autism. And that being a higher percentage nationally. And there's the question about whether that's about how assessment processes work, although I think a lot of parents would tell you that the assessment process is too, too slow. And so there's possibly more who should have a diagnosis of autism. You could probably put the decision, the information either way, but it's, there's been no national research that says why in some areas of the country are there higher percentage of children with SCN than other areas of the country. In terms of identifying that a child has SCN, it's the school that first and foremost identifies that the child has special educational needs. When the SEND reforms came in in 2014, there was actually a national drive from government to say that they expected the number of children recorded as special educational needs to be reduced nationally through the reforms because they anticipated that better early identification would mean that actually the right interventions from school meant that the children's needs were being met. Therefore, they no longer had special educational needs. Interesting dynamic and an interesting point in terms of at the time, because you'd think, why would you want to necessarily push that down? But that was a part, part of an overall expectation through the SEND reforms. One, one hypothesis is that we have some schools that may over-identify needs. And so the, the SEND code of practice, which is our statutory document from within which to work, says that schools should follow a process of assess plan, do review to identify needs. And so what are they over-identifying needs rather than putting good teaching and learning in place? I think what we're seeing, because we've done quite a high, a lot of work within the city in terms of making sure that our schools are reflective in identifying the needs, is actually we've probably just in an area and as a city got more kids who have got a greater level of need than elsewhere. And I don't think there's any reason or rhyme or reason to explain that. But the reason why I think we're, we're getting it right in identification of need is because we've done a lot of work with our education providers to look at how they follow that graduated approach of assess plan, do review. And we utilise what's called the Sheffield Support Grid to look at the levelling. We've done a lot of moderation around that. Unfortunately, with the pandemic this year, we're going to look at the most complex in terms of our moderation. We've parked some of that. We were even going to do it, but then with a lockdown in January, we thought a little bit unfair on our school send coast to ask them to do more. With the next bit saying, right, let's look right at that very low level and very low level SCN needs. Have they got special educational needs that are being identified as low level? Or is that a teaching and learning issue in terms of good quality practice? But I can't tell you why we've got more, but statistically we have. In terms of then how, why don't we have more EHCP plans? Again, we could take one of two hypotheses. And again, I haven't got an evidence base to prove one way or the other. One hypothesis is that actually the early intervention work that we do and the work that happens through our localities and utilising the MY Plan and the funding that we put in place means that a higher percentage of those kids who might in other local areas have an EHCP plan don't have them. So for example, we give funding to children who don't have EHCP plans. In other local authorities, you must have an EHCP plan to have additional funding. And so there are a number of kids who potentially haven't gone through that EHCP plan process because the resource that they need to meet their needs is available and they can manage it through a MY Plan. The flip side, and other people could well argue, I hope if this isn't the case, and I don't think this is the case, is that we're just not identifying the needs and therefore not bringing them through quickly enough. I think actually we've got through our locality working a much better identification of needs. In terms of backlogs, so currently, so the EHCP needs assessment process is a 20-week process. Currently, we've got about 170, 180 kids going through that process. And it changes obviously on, on, actually no, it's slightly higher than that now. It changes on a daily basis and It changes on a daily basis. And as of earlier this week, we've got 48 who are over the 20 week timeframe. And what we're trying to do is drill down, why are they over the 20 week timeframe? Where are we missing the points? And what we know, so before the send reforms, the timeframe for a statement assessment was 26 weeks and they reduced it to 20 weeks. So it's a very tight time scale anyway. But as we're drilling down, we're getting some points right and then other points taking too long. So for example, making a decision to do an assessment, we're doing in the right timeframe, we're doing really well on. And actually we're bringing them in early. Actually making a decision to issue an assessment, we're doing too late. So what we're looking at, and I'm talking through with the service manager is how do we make sure that the chasing that happens for the outstanding advice? So that they come in in time is really robust. Now Covid had an impact on that. But our backlog in terms of those that are overtime is about 50 at this point in time going through assessment. And previous years, we've been about 600 kids come through the assessment process. I would say we've seen, we've actually seen no reduction due during Covid. And since schools have come back, we're actually seeing an increase in requests for assess. And a number of those actually are based on the experience that the child's had during Covid and coming back as starting to see more concerns. So where things were working well when they were in a class, they've had that year of gap potentially for some of them, and then they're really struggling. So that's where our backlog's at. Difference across the city, statistically, the highest percentage of children with S E N is in locality B, which is the north, north. I'm terrible with geography. East of the city, so first park for veil type areas is locality B. It is statistically the highest percentage of children with S E N. The sharp elbows more clued up. I think, I think informed parents will ask more challenging questions. And there are areas of the city that will have more informed parents in terms of that. And there is a city that will have less informed parents. And but ultimately, parents are right to have the elbows and say, where is the right support for my child's needs? And our starting point is always to say, how do we help your school meet those needs in the first place?
Thank you.
Did I answer all of them?
Yes, yes, you did. Thank you. I have on my, my list, I've got Marouf. I've got Angela and then I've got Simon and Josie, do you want to come in as well? Right. Okay. So Marouf, your go.
Thank you, Chair. Thank you. I mean, this is an area that I've been shadowing for nearly three years now. And on a regular basis, and I know Andrew hasn't been responsible for this area for quite all that time. So I do caveat what I say with the, with the provider that Andrew has recently taken on this. And I've had almost monthly briefings on this subject as well. And it has actually been an area of huge concern for many people, including, I mean, parents in particular, because they do suffer quite badly in this area in terms of how, how it's been handled. And I, I think Andrew and I have had this conversation, I think a few weeks ago as well, that this area has been quite challenging for the authority on, on a number of fronts. One is resources. And I did ask a question recently on that. And the number of resources that are actually allocated to this area is fairly small. Secondly, I mean, I did raise the issue again, saying that this should be classified as a bit of an emergency, because we're into doing emergencies these days. So I thought S E N D needs to be an emergency area, E H C Ps, et cetera. So these are things that I'm just building up on what my, my views on this are. And also some questions on it. I mean, this has, as I said, been quite a challenge. I mean, we've always resorted quite heavily to tribunals. And that in itself has a huge cost to it, which I know Andrew accepts from the discussions that we've been having. And it would be interesting to know how much money we've been actually spending on resisting a lot of this. When I use the word resisting, this is not because I'm choosing to use the word resist. It's what the parents tell me that the local authority tries to resist E H C Ps and S E N D classifications. So I'm using it in that sense.
Marouf, we've, we've had the ombudsman report and clearly was pretty concerning, I'll say that. So how do you feel now that things have changed, if at all? The improvement plan, because that's what we're here to talk about.
Yeah, no, no, no. I mean, I'm just setting, I'm literally, Chair, I'm talking about a meeting that we've been having more recently as well. So I've been having a meeting with, with education on a monthly sort of basis. But I've not seen any consistent change in case work, because the number of, the amount of case work that I'm actually getting, apart from the ward case work, is majority around S E N D, E H C Ps across the city. And I'll give you an example, Chair. I mean, quite recently, I had a family who contacted me. They'd actually been waiting nearly four years to get their situation resolved. And to the extent where the mother was almost, I think she was heading for a breakdown. Until she came to us and we tried to resolve it. And to be fair to Andrew and his service, we did actually resolve it, but it shouldn't resort to the fact that they have to come to members to do that.
But can I? More than 20 weeks, isn't it?
Yeah, it's far more than 20 weeks. And there have been quite a number of areas where there's been more than 20 weeks. So I think what we've got to do is, my sort of initial question is, do we, as an authority, and does Andrew as the director of that area accept the fact that we have failed quite a number of parents? Not deliberately, but because I don't think we've done that deliberately. Basically, it's the fact that we haven't had the resources in place and we haven't anticipated the number of E H C P cases that we're likely to have been getting, because if you look at the statistics, we had 157 in 2014 for E H C Ps. We had, in 2020, that figure had gone up to 926. And I'm assuming that the resources were not running in parallel with that increase that was actually there. So there's a number of issues and, and the next issue that I'm going to, I'm going to touch upon is elective home education. Again, this is something I asked a question on in 2018, 19. And we were seeing a significant rise in the number of parents that were choosing to elect to have children taught at home. And I think at that particular time, it was the figure was around about 400 and something. That figure has now gone up year on year because I've kept an eye on it going up year on year. And now we're getting to the stage where we're almost, if we continue at that pace and with the pandemic bringing in a lot of people as well, as Andrew Jones has mentioned. We could end up with a situation of nearly a thousand or 2000 people who are choosing to.
160 at the moment.
At the moment, but I'm just predicting if it continues to rise at this rate in the next few five years, which means basically we're bigger than some of the secondary school. And the question that arises as a result of that, which I've been asked on a number of occasions is, well, what measures have we put in place that the quality of education that is actually being provided in the home is of adequate quality? Do we have support for parents when they're at home? And I think if I remember correctly, and do forgive me here, Chair, because I might have got it wrong. When I did ask this question on full council, I can't remember when it was. I think I got a fairly nebulous answer, but it may, it sort of equated to not many, more than two or three people were involved in this area and supporting this area of work. So I'm, I might, might be sounding critical, but I'm, I'm trying to be constructive in this as well. In the sense that there are many, many families out there. Even one child in a family, the consequences of all the multiplier effect of how it affects people, both psychologically and in the, in the longer term is quite significant. So, so the point that I'm trying to get across heavily here is number one, we are seeing a huge increase in parents choosing to elect to home educate. What measures have we got in place to support those parents? Because they have a choice. And if we haven't got those people in place to support them, what, what, what have we got in place to actually raise or get more resources into that area? Number two, any, even one E H C P outstanding is more than what we should have. Because if it takes over 20 weeks, like these are young people who have been denied education. And we are responsible for that, we all are. And number three is, can we please admit the fact that we have a lack of resources in this area? And maybe as an authority, we, we need to choose to reprioritize where we put extra resources into. And I would suggest that this is one of the areas that does actually need extra resources. Commendable as it is that we keep getting these reports time and time again, saying we're doing well on this and we're doing well on that, we're doing well on this. But the bottom line, as far as I see it, is we are still failing. And we shouldn't be because these, these are young people. And Chair, I know, I know you appreciate this, but these are young people we're talking about.
Do know that. And the fact that we've had non-boardsman reports, which was critical is why we're discussing it now.
Absolutely, absolutely. But.
So I think, I think we know.
I'm passionate about this area because I've been following it for three years.
I know.
And I know, I know, I know I've said quite a bit there, but I think there's a lot of that, that Andrew in particular will resonate with because Andrew's only recently taken over. And I think I'm, and we need to be cross council as well. Because there are, it's not just Andrew's area that we're talking about, we're talking about other areas that need to work with Andrew. And maybe there are silo attitudes happening in those areas. But the bottom line is we are still not there. And I know you appreciate that. That's why I've had the ombudsman's report. But we should not just rest on that, we should be doing something further.
I think what we need to say is we have the, what are the, what's the action plan that came out of it? And how are we going forward is what we're asking, because that's the role of our committee to us.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. I mean, that's what I'm trying to get across in these core areas that I've identified.
Let's ask.
I'll go, I'll, I'll, I'll shut up there, Chair, because I can go on for hours on this.
I gathered that, Marouf. Right.
Thank you.
Andrew.
And I'll ask Tim to detail specific areas of investment shortly. Because there has been investment in a number of areas within it. In relation to elective home education, that is one of the areas where there has been investment and which has actually matched the, the rise and the increase. And that actually predates the recent rise. A new process was introduced, was developed in 2018, introduced in 2019, which is a cross multidisciplinary team approach, including mass, including our admissions team, including children missing from education team, and also including our own send team. And we do also have a dedicated elective home education advisory teacher already in post, not all local authorities do have that. Elective home education in itself poses a problem in the sense of at the point at which a child becomes electively home educated, obviously at the decision of their parents, then that is an absolute loss of funding and revenue to the council. So that includes, for example, the, the money that would have been allocated to their school. And obviously that varies according to the age or stage that the child is at. But that funding is lost completely to the system. And also the dedicated schools grant, the section of the funding that actually comes to the local authority to undertake this work is also a loss. So every child who becomes electively home educated actually produces a loss in revenue and money to the, to the local authority. Nevertheless, we have invested in this area and we've just recently invested further in this area, including additional officers to administer, to monitor, to track the children who become, who've become elected to home educated. And that includes conversations right at the start of that elective process to highlight to parents, you know, the demands that there are in terms of educating their children at home. Clearly, many, clearly many parents do so, make that decision for very positive reasons. And that's a very sensitive discussion in its own right. I'm clear, I've got my colleague, the director of finance on the call, so I'll be very careful what I say in terms of money. You know, no officer worth their salt is going to say, I've got too much money or too many officers. But what I am keen to do first is, as Tim's highlighting in terms of the the development of practice with the officers that we've got, is I'm very keen to actually develop and improve their practice first before we actually start to make a business case for additional funding or for additional resources. Clearly, if numbers of children go up, clearly the case work goes up. And clearly they would then become a need as part of that. But I'm keen that we don't, you know, go and ask for resources before we've actually put some of the systems and processes back into order and improve them as part of that. Tim, can you just highlight some of the specific areas of investment, including additional education psychologists that we've appointed as well?
So I would reflect Andrew's point, no, no officer worth their salt isn't going to say, give us more money to do things. But it's right that we get the, the systems right, isn't it? And that's what we're trying to do. Interestingly, when we were inspected by Ofsted and C Q C, we asked the question, what did they see was a appropriate case work level for an officer doing send assessments to put in place? And they said about two, no more than 200 children per chat, per case officer. Now that seems a big massive number as well. Now, in part, that's not 200 children going through first time E H C needs assessment, but that includes those who are going through annual reviews. What we know is we've done more work around annual reviews is that we're seeing more amendments and that's taking more time. We have done substantial investments since we, since in the past couple of years. We've recently added another four inclusion officers into the central service. As part of, we've added another point five locality manager, more senior role. One of the challenges that we face is good recruitment. There's no national framework for case officers to say, actually, this is what, this is how you train them, these are jobs that we want people to aspire to. And interestingly, when we recruit, we struggle because we often get people thinking that they're going to come either being a worker with the family much, much more rather than administering a casework of 200, or they're going to be out delivering teaching and learning and support. But we have increased substantially. As part of that, we've done some slight changes and we're going out for the adverts around those things shortly. We've also increased our educational psychology offer in the city. So we have a statutory duty to provide educational psychology services for E H C needs assessment. And on average, it's two days per child as a minimum to do the statutory assessment for an E H C plan. We've taken all the maths of that. We've included also then a core offer for the city, whether it's for those children in special school in mainstream, which is above and beyond our statutory core elements. But also we, that service delivers support for areas such as critical incidents. And so we've taken all of that and then from that identified and put in place an additional three educational psychologists. And working with our, our schools across the local area to say, how might we trade a model further in terms of being able to say how they might use their S E M funding that they get, schools get what's called notional S E M funding to buy an extra, because some of them already are, but let's coordinate that and provide that. So we're looking at that model to try and increase further in the city. I think it's also important to say in terms of where we've put investments is, is one of our challenges has been within our special school estate. And my commissioning colleagues have worked really hard to increase last year and increase again for this coming September, the number of special school specialist places. So for the, we've already, we're filling everything that we've got, we're, we're pushing in terms of classes. We're, we're, we're doing research and work to try and say, is there any more physical space on the building, on the site? But in addition, we will have an additional 115 places minimum this September that we've already allocated in our specialist estate. 25 in primary, the rest of those in secondary sector. They've already been filled because they're the demands that have already come through. So we've increased that. And we've also increased what is essentially top up funding. So funding for children with E H C plans goes through three different things. It's the money that the school gets, what's called the element one or P, the every twenty pupil unit. I call it the bombs on seats money that they get for every child, they get their notional S E M funding. And then local authority provides top up funding. We do that through our localities. So we've delegated it out for schools to try and make sure there's robust support and challenge locally. And that's increased by 1.5 million pounds over the past couple of years. So substantial increase. I would say our, our high needs block, so all of this funding specialist support comes through what's called the high needs block of funding. Just very mindful that consistently the funding formula, that is national funding formula that says how much we should have as a local authority to spend on this area and the amount that we then given by the E S F A has been substantially below where we're at. So currently we're about five million pounds short on the high needs block this year, which would be the resource we would also use to meet those needs. And so that's essentially where we're investing. So I guess the key, critical point is we're investing more and we're putting more in place as we see more and more kids come through with demand and need across the board. as we see more and more kids come through with demand and need across the board.
Thank you. Angela, you're next.
Thank you, Chair. Thank you, Andrew and Tim, for all your answers and the report in the first place. And Andrew, as I mentioned in the pre-meeting, that if that error on our page 18, there's 3.3% and the 2.7% that need to be, we've been sent a new version and it's still there. I thought it might be corrected in this. And I just want to share some of the, so the comments and the concerns that have been raised already. First of all, in terms of the format of the, the report, in terms of processes and how we are addressing and, you know, which key points we are, you know, taking stock and seeing how it's working in terms of the recommendations from the ombudsman in particular. And as I said in the pre-meeting, for us, you know, as members, it would always be important to include how many children in care are included in the numbers that we're given, because we are, we are corporate parents. So for us, it's really important to have that kind of data as a matter of course. So that would be, that would be very important. And just a question has occurred to me whilst, whilst you were speaking earlier in response to the Chair's, you know, question about why is it, is it because some parents have got sharper elbows? I do like that expression. In terms of us being a local authority, what are we doing and how are we addressing the fact that lots of the special needs children seem to be in areas where there are already inequalities? Where lots of the parents may have not, may not have English as a first language?
Yeah.
And therefore, because Andrew, you've said communication is very important, we may, some of the messages may get lost in translation, if you want, literally. And the parents may not have the, you know, the skills to ask for what is right for their children. So how are we actually advocating for these children ourselves? So that we don't leave them behind and we can address some of the issues as early as possible? Because I think there's lots of things that are connected. I am a former teacher. And I was just thinking, the last 11 and a half years of my career, I taught in a school in Richmond Ward in Sheffield. And when I started teaching there in 2004, at the beginning of 2004, the special needs department was massive, it was fantastic, you know, that we knew the children inside out, this was a very large secondary school. By the time I left, the school was an academy and there were four people for, you know, nearly 1300 children that were in the SEN department. That was still excellent, but we didn't have the same resources that we had, you know, 10 years previously. So in terms, so I know what it's like to be in a school and to teach children to have additional needs. And it's all about resources and how well resources the schools are. And I know that this is not like a council problem, but often in those areas where there are already inequalities, there are also more children with special needs. And there are also shortages of staff. So what are we doing so that we don't let those children down as a local authority? So I share some of the concerns that Councilor Maruth was raising. Because even one child let down is a family that we're letting down. It's, it's not just the numbers on a piece of paper, so it is very important. Thank you.
So Councilor Maruth has referenced, you know, that I'm relative recent in terms of my appointment as Director of Education Skills, I actually took up the post in January. So it's a very macro strategic level. And just the development and the introduction of the Education and Skills Director, which I'm now the Director, is in itself an important way of responding to the concerns that you just raised. So actually now, within the Education Skills Director for the first time ever, we have responsibility for learning and outcomes from children who are with childminders all the way through to adult education, for children, young people and adults whose first language is English, through to every child, young person, adult, whose English is an additional language. So within my service area now, as well as SEND, the English additional language and newly arrived services there, the Adult Education Service also sits under the same brief. And we're at, we're at an early stage of that. But nevertheless, what we are doing is working hard to synthesize and to develop those services into a more coherent whole, so that we actively look at the information, the needs across the piece and across the whole, and therefore have a more collective response to that. So Tim sits alongside some of the other heads of service who run those other services, which enable us to have that kind of strategic overview in terms of where the needs are, that we're actually making sure that we actually use resources properly and wisely as part of that. And so it is, it's an early day because I'm only in post since January, I mean, I was acting director up until Christmas, but we, it's an area that we're very passionate about. And I'd be happy, in the pre-meeting, you know, it was indicated that we'd be able to come back to the committee, you know, perhaps in six months' time, I'd be happy to outline some of that more integrated work there and perhaps even start to show and demonstrate some of the impact of that.
Thank you, I wasn't trying to criticize, but I think because you've mentioned communication. I mean, I'm glad that, you know, I was sure you, you already thought about it, but it's, it's good to throw things there because sometimes the simplest thing, not obvious.
I said to the Chair by email after the pre-meeting, the lines of questions, just this, it's a very useful process for us to actually, to help us to refine thinking, to shed some light on areas where we need to continue to pursue. So it's a really useful question and I think it would be useful for us to come back and report to the committee on that in terms of how we are aligning the resource on that.
Thank you. Simon. It's your go.
Thank you, Chair. And I thank you to all the officers involved in, in producing this report. I, I say, it was me that really asked for this in the first place. And so the thing that triggered it was the, the, the report we got on on the, from the ombudsman. And, and obviously, reports from colleagues where education and health funds, you know, it seems to be an issue. And obviously, the problem is, is that it's all very much kind of behind the times. So the, the, the report on the, on the, on the complaints to the ombudsman, I think was from 2019, 20. So obviously, we're, we're talking history there, but, you know, it was still, I say, an issue for certain casework amongst my, my colleagues. And I think I characterized it at the time that I felt that we were missing, we're missing some compassion from the system. I think we kind of, we must have lost that somehow and became, you know, just that sausage machine of, 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 you know, that it wasn't missing that human element. So I think we were a little bit disappointed in the, in the report, because, you know, what we wanted to see was, was how, you know, what we've done over and what we are doing and what we're going to do in the future to, to bring that compassion back. And so I think the things that you've been talking about, very much, I think, have covered that and showed that, you know, you have, you have made that start. So I don't think I've got any specific questions. I'm really just to say, thank you certainly for, for the report and also very much for, you know, your obvious passion for, for getting things right and moving things on in Sheffield. And so, you know, so I think I'm happier with, with where we are. But I think, you know, 12, six months, 12 months, hopefully you can bring it to the back and I'll be even happier. Yeah, so I mean, one of the things that you did mention, I think in passing, sort of is about removing the lawyers from the process. I mean, nothing against lawyers, but obviously, I think, again, we talked about where, where we failed. And I think that, that shows that any process has failed if you're, if you're involving lawyers. So if we can, if we can reduce that, reduce the costs and kind of say, put the, put the compassion back in. But again, thank you very much indeed.
Thank you. Andrew, you may not know it, but if Simon is happy, then that is a large step forward for you. Josie.
Thank you, thank you, Chair, and thank you for the, I read all the reports, I've been in and out of work for quite a while. For me, a lot of the points have been raised, I'm not going to go over them because that's a waste of everybody's time. Just sort of picking up, the thing that worries me, and I know it's not about what the scrutiny committee is looking at, but I was on the scrutiny committee and it probably, you lose track of time two, three years ago. And the worry for me is, it can't just be about throwing resource at this because quite a lot of resource was put into this two or three years, and I know the numbers have gone up. So it's about, yes, putting the resource in, but looking tighter at what that resource has been spent on and what you're getting back from that. And again, I concur with taking the lawyers out of it, because quite a lot of time, if you don't disrespect the lawyers, because I know we've got Gillian sat here, so no problem with, with lawyers being involved if they need to be. But I think sometimes if you look at things from a different perspective, a lawyer will try and sort of try not to take on any blame, whereas parents in these situations aren't looking to apportion blame necessarily and prove something, what they're wanting is their situation to be made right. That's what, that's what they really want at the end of it, because they're probably struggling at home and, and don't want to jump about, but further down, what I've got is that people have mentioned that there are consequences for the family. There are consequences for the school and the consequences for the family, because they both get better resources and they both get better support once a child's been proven to have a need. And it's not that you want to have more children proven to have a need because people get resources, but it's because they need those resources. And that's, that's the worry for me. So it's, and I think we've got to give you the time, because we've got this new report and you've got to put actions into place. But what I don't think we can keep doing is kicking this ball down the road, because it's been kicked down the road. I mean, if you've got people that have been waiting four years, it's been kicked down the road at least four years. And as I say, if it's two to three years, it's ours. On, on the scrutiny committee, it's probably even longer than that. So I think, not just because we've got the report, I think for the schools and for the parents and for the children, we need to get this right. So that's on the EHCs, because I think ever since they were brought in, I mean, to be fair, they weren't implemented properly and they weren't, they weren't passed over to you properly, because they were done, I can't remember what it was, but they were done elsewhere. And then they were brought in house and that was never, we've been playing catch up ever since, but that's no good for the children in the system, they need to have that sorted. So just to say, yes, resources, but just making sure that that is not just, that those are managed as well. And it's, it's about, it's not just about the capabilities of the parents, saying whether they may or not have the skills. If a parent's dealing with more than one child with needs and they're not getting the support, it's not that they've not got the skills or the capabilities, they've probably not got the emotional reserves to be able to do this, because living with children that aren't satisfied at school and are coming home and are distressed and annoyed and all the rest of it, then the parents have to deal with that, they have to deal with their everyday lives and everything else. So it's not just well-to-do areas, you could have people in better-off areas will still not be able to have the emotional resource in order to deal with this and wait, wait up to four years to be supported, because they've got a child that is going to be causing them a lot of trouble. And, and I think that's what we need to be looking at. So that's on the EHC side. On the elective home education, again, I was on the scrutiny committee when we looked at that and it gave us major concern. And again, it does need to be looked at with the academies, because again, sometimes some of the elective homeschooling can be coming about because of people being, pupils being excluded from schools. And I remember when we were on the committee, there was a much higher level of exclusions from academies than there were from local authority schools. And that's something that I would like to have looked at in this, just to make sure that when they are at home, it's not because they've been sidelined in a school for some reason. And also, again, it sounds like some of the things that we wanted two or three years, years ago have been put in place, such as looking after children that could be at higher risk and vulnerable for whatever reason, because if children aren't in school, they could be out in the community unsupervised, then that's when children do become extremely vulnerable to abuse and manipulation by people out in the community. So I'd just like to give you the time that you need to do it, but just what worries me is this is not a new problem and it has been around for a number of years. And I think we've really got to put it right, because, you know, if, if children aren't getting the support and the children are out in the community, it can be the rest of their lives that are getting wasted and spoiled. So I just, I wish you luck. And I want to come back in six months, a, a, a great deal of these have been caught up, particularly the older ones. But it's not just about throwing resources, it's what you do with those resources actually in CQ. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, I think the resource answer, question had been answered by Tim in terms of saying how it was important to work out what you wanted before you did.
Yeah.
Was that, Andrew, were you going to add something, sorry?
Yeah, I just, if we were sitting at a table, Gillian might be kicking him in the throat, but I, I just need to clarify that what I'm saying in relation to. Now, what I need to just clarify in relation to my comments about the involvement of our legal team is this, our legal team aren't involved, this is not adversarial because our legal team are involved, it's already adversarial. And our legal team have given us great support in terms of actually working through the, through the tribunal process and in particular, you know, going to some of the individual conversations, but, you know, our lawyers are more likely to be actually telling us, you know, to stop tribunal process than they are to be saying, take it through a tribunal. And they've given us great advice and support through that. My point is, is that if we are to shift the culture and to actually make the whole process less adversarial, then ultimately, you know, that will rely on better caseworking, on that quality relationship between an officer and the family. Ultimately, there'll be less of a need for the involvement of colleague lawyers within that. There would be a saving on that. But also, there's other bits of, you know, expenditure. So children who are placed in independent schools, children who are placed further out to the city, all of those create additional costs for us. And it is about building confidence and building the capacity that Tim alluded to earlier in terms of what we've got in the city to actually try to ensure that children's needs are met as close to the city as possible.
Thank you. Diane, you're the only councillor who hasn't spoken, did you want to say something? And then we'll wrap up with our recommendations.
Thank you, Chair. I just wanted to ask, because there, there's lots of outputs in here, I wanted to ask about the outcomes. And, you know, the, the, the whole intent was to make the process feel better, and Andrew, you've just spoken about this. Are you getting comments back from parents? And from people participating and carers participating in the process, that in actual fact, they feel as if they're more important and that their children are actually getting the attention that they deserve? Does it feel better?
On the whole, I think it feels better, that we're in a public session and I'll be careful how I phrase this, which is obviously, you know, we, I can point to, yeah, I could give you examples of parents where for them it's improved and they've had a, a better experience of it. But we've still got tribunals, we've still got complaints. So in other words, we clearly have still got further work to do, you know. Councilor Maruth, you know, you know, talked about failure and what I will say is, we've still got some way to go, we've still got improvements to make. We have a written statement of action in place to respond to an Ofsted inspection in 2018 and we continue to work through that and to make improvements. And so, which is, I feel that things have improved and we can show a number of improvements. We're certainly not complacent about that. And certainly for that individual child, for that individual family, where things haven't gone to plan or haven't, you know, gone to in accord with their wishes, then clearly. or haven't, you know, gone to in accord with their wishes, then clearly it creates, it creates difficulty for them and it creates unnecessary stresses for them and within the, within the system, which I am determined with Tim, together we are determined to continue to improve, to improve this, to improve the indicators and to make things better for everybody.
Thank you. That's exactly the answer we wanted, Andrew, I think. Yeah. Can I have some thumbs up? Was that right? Yes. There you go, Andrew. Can I suggest, Simon, you said report back in a year's term. I was going to ask for six months. Am I being overly optimistic? Can we have a report then in six months to see how things are progressing? And maybe we can talk outside this meeting about what we'd actually like in the report so that we're all happy about that. Okay. Thank you very much, Tim and Andrew for coming. And I realise for everybody else, this has been quite a long session, but it is, as Marouf has said, something we're all passionate about because it's our children. So if, if you'd like to go, obviously if you want to stay and have an exciting audit, you're welcome. But if you want to go now, that's fine too. And I'm going to move item 10 next because our outside visitors have waited very patiently. So Hayley, if you want to, are you kicking off?
I think I will actually, thank you, Chair. That's no, no problem at all. So you've got our report in your pack from your page 111. So this has been a long time coming. I'm very conscious of that. You know, this is the outcome of our audit of the 1920 financial statements. And, and I'm pleased to say that by a few last points, which Hayley will take us through in a minute, and, and the timetable to, to clear those off and sign the accounts, we are ready to, to provide our opinion. And just, just to be clear, so that we expect that we will issue an unqualified audit opinion on the financial statements for 2019, 20, which is good. And we have no matters to report on your arrangements in place to secure economy efficiency and effectiveness for the year to the 31st of March 2020.
Right.
Remind myself which year we're working in. And what I did want to do was just take you through in the executive summary, that the key points that the audit committee need to be aware of are where we found audit differences, where you have chosen not to adjust those. Because what's important about that for us is that you give us your view, that you as a committee are satisfied, that it's appropriate not to adjust the accounts. And that's then included in the letter of representation from the organisation back to us to confirm that view. So on page 117 of your pack, you'll see at the top of that page, you identified nine unadjusted audit differences, which management have chosen not to adjust. Those are set out in more detail in section four of the report. And you'll see one of those actually relates to a previous year's unadjusted difference, which comes forward and adds into, to the unadjusted differences for the year. The total impact of those is 10.9 million. But if you remember, our materiality level is around 25 million. And therefore, from our perspective, we're comfortable that they don't have a material impact on the numbers as presented in your accounts. I think that was all I was going to focus on. There, there are a number of control observations that we've reflected on and that we've fed back in the report to you. And, and I would stress, although we're, we're at the end of 2021 now, improvements in those areas will make the audit run more smoothly as well for us as well as for management. So I would focus attention on those going forward to, to check that actions are being taken to improve those. Other than that, I was just going to hand over to Hayley to get her to take you through where the last few points are that we need to work through over the next few days to be able to have you sign your accounts and have us provide our opinion.
Thank you, Janet. Hayley?
Yes. So in terms of status then, so we have a, one minor query that I know the team are working on in relation to PPE, but we're not expecting that to result in anything that you need to be aware of or any changes in the financial statements. That we've had an updated version of the cash flow statement, which members of our team have now had a look at. It just needs to go through final secondary review. We've had an updated set of financial statements with a number of adjustments posted that we've gone through and checked we are happy with. There have been some changes that have gone through today, which are purely classification adjustments within one of the notes in the accounts. And they've arisen as part of our whole of government accounts work that we're in the process of finalising. We do have some follow-up queries as to why those classification changes have arisen. So we'll work with Dave and the team over the next day or so, just to bottom those out. And then we have our sort of final close down review procedures that are normal towards the back end of the audit so that we can sign off on close down our audit file. So we would be proposing that we sign next week, once that has been finalised. And I think there's probably been a conversation amongst yourselves around potentially delegated authority then as to the ability to sign next week.
Okay, thank you. Angela, you said, were you going to ask any questions or were you okay, Angela?
Well, my question rather than for the auditors are for our financial team, but I guess we can ask the questions in the summer regarding the financial control in particular. Because obviously there's, there's not much that can be done for, you know, the, the this financial year that has finished because it's all done now, so they can't be, you know, controls can be backdated. But yeah, we'll, we'll ask questions. Don't worry, we'll keep them on their toes.
It's not like you at all, Angela. Has anybody got any other comments, please? Marouf?
Just on the spirit of what you said earlier, Chair, that has anybody read all the 886 pages? And I'm on page 123. Page 123, depreciated replacement costs, it identifies an error of 18.4 million where the values had been overstated by the valuation process. And the question I've got is, does that, was that a follow-on from the previous year? Because if it was overvalued by 18.4 million and you picked it up this time, was it also overvalued last time, which in, in which case it gives a, a false number? And 18.4 million is quite significant.
So I don't have the answer to last year. What I would say though is this is, these are assets that have been, I think, revalued this year. So there was a formula error within the valuations for this year. I can see Marouf nodding, so so there won't be an impact on last year's.
That's fine. It's just that the number seems really, really high and that's, that's the question I was asking. That's all, 18.4 million just seemed a bit high to, to, to have an error. Thank you, Chair.
Yep, thank you, Marouf. Does anybody from our team? Dave, do you want to comment on that? Is that, I know you said that, was it 25 million, did you say was, Janet, was your, your, what's the phrase? Under which we're not-
Materiality.
Yeah.
Materiality. And so we, yes, if you look at page 116, we used a materiality of 25.5 million. In fact, it, it moved from planning through to final draft financial statements to 26.8 million.
Okay.
Just give a bit of context, Chair. You know, the, the council's asset base is over £3 billion. So although the figure's counting quite high in, in relation to, to that. And, and what the the asset base is trying to show, you know, the people of Sheffield is roughly the size of the assets that we control and look after. And in some ways, I compare this to them against the amount of loans we've got outstanding against them, which is, you know, on, in terms of loans, less than, less than a billion pounds to show how much we're, we're mortgaged. In terms of, of the understanding of a reader of the account, sort of even a figure of, of 18 million doesn't really change their understanding of, of the council's net worth and its overall position. Much as we'd like to get them all spot on and, you know, the auditors have given the all the assets and all the valuations a, a very good going over this year. And, and there will always be some bits and bobs. So yeah, it's a, it's a bigger change than we would like. And, and Councillor Marouf is very right to highlight it, but you know, it's not in terms of the overall account, something that destroys a reader's confidence in the accounts and their, their understanding of the financial position of the authority, which is what Janet means by materiality.
Materiality.
Okay. Are there any other questions from anybody? Right. Oh, Angela. Go ahead.
So a question for Dave really. Are there any, any of those changes that are suggested for the like 2019, 20 accounts have been adjusted in 2020, 21? You know, the, the the nine points, have, have any of them been adjusted with the suggestions? And will there be any adjustments? Are we going to keep carrying these? The, the burdens of these forevermore?
No, we will, we will try and correct where we can in this year. And if they're valuation things, then a number of them self-correct as well because we update the valuations and the valuation methodologies. If there's a formula error, we will try and, we will try and correct that where we, where we can do. It is obviously quite late in, in the day now. And, and so some of these, if we'd had a lot more time, we might have gone through and, and redone them back in last year. But then we'd be sitting here another, in another month whilst we worked through all the changes and the auditors checked that we made all the changes correct. And you can go on and on forever. But we, we do need to work them through so they don't, they don't perpetuate. The good things about things like asset valuations is it's a rolling programme of updating. So it, it should get itself back in, back in line fairly quickly.
Thank you. Okay. The recommendation is that we note the report, but also that we approve the statement of accounts for 2019, 20 and request that approval is given to the Chair of the Committee to conclude the audit by signing the letter of management representations and the statement of accounts for 2019, 20, following the meeting. Are you okay with that, members? Thank you. Thank you. Lots of good thumbs there. Thank you. So sorry, where am I here? Hayley and Janet, if you'd like to go and have your tea, that's fine with us.
Can I just add my fact that Hayley and Janet and, and my team, it's been a a really tough year. We've talked about the, the national challenges facing external audit and also everyone's had to do the accounts and do the audit at a time when people have been remote, you've not been able to sit by somebody at the desk and have them point figures on a working paper and, and talk it through in person, which makes things really tough. And I know everyone's worked really, really hard to, to get here on, on our side and their side. So I'd like to say thanks to everyone for their hard work.
Absolutely, Dave. I'm sorry, that was so remiss of me not to have said that. And I know that all the other members are going to put their thumbs up now to agree with you. See?
And we, and we would like to thank Dave and his team. Yeah.
Yeah.
Because, because he's absolutely right. It's really tough. And, and Hayley and I, when, when we get these done, we'll then take a breath, we'll turn around and we'll come straight back and talk to you about 2021.
I hope you'll sit down with a small G and T first.
That's a, that's a tempting thought.
Right.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. So our next item is item seven, internal audit plan. I might even open my agenda to find it. Sorry, troops. Okay, and that's Linda.
Thank you, Chair. This report is to, to present to the committee members the internal plan for 21, 22, which starts obviously now from, from April. It's this year's audit plan.
Yeah.
And the plans developed helped me provide assurance when I do the head of audits opinion, which you get the annual report through. So I've read that in my, when I've been producing this, this tactical plan. And also when I've considered the plan, what we do is we look at the risk, the risk registers within the portfolios, we looked at the corporate's management plan, and moved to the AGS, the, sorry, the annual governance statement returns from, from directors. And then also we've had meetings with directors, exec directors and finance staff, portfolio staff. So we've we've used a broad range of areas to try and, and compile this, this audit plan. What we have to do is bear in mind, it needs to be flexible and reactive because obviously, A, with the COVID pandemic, but also there's always the, the unknown. You know, we put, we put audits down, but then there's there could be sort of reactive investigation, what we need to do. But then also there could be higher priority risks that occurred during the year. So we do need to be flexible with the plan. But what you'll find is appendix one to the report, that gives you all the detail of all the audits that we're proposing to do. Alex, I'll give you the headline. There's 117 reviews listed within all those portfolios. So, and all the tabs. So and overall, we've got a number of days, which is just over 1,740. So so we've got quite a few days there. And that mirrors the resources we've got for the, the audit team. We have got at the end of the plan on appendix one, you'll notice we've got what we call the first call list.
Yeah.
So the, the audits where we sort of have not picked the, have not made the priority for, for this year's audit reviews. But if a review, if we have to delay or defer an audit, we can use this first call list to, to bring them forward. So so some of these reviews might get on to take them this year. And if they don't get on to take them this year, those first call lists will form part of next year's audit plan. So, so we'll still review them and assess the priorities. And another area that I will bring back to the audit committee is we agreed previously a couple of years ago that if, when I do the mid-year review in September, if I have what we call a significant change, which is over 15%, then I will bring that back to the audit committee and rediscover the, the audit plan. So what I'm asking for now is members to do is just to, to endorse the, the tactical plan for this year. And also questions about any audits that are on there.
I was, I was going to ask Alison actually, if you had any comments that you wanted to make on, on what is being proposed for the tactical plan.
No, Chair, I don't. I think it's very thorough. And I think that with the resource that's available, you know, there's, there's an awful lot on there.
There is, isn't there? Thank you. So it looks like we're on the right track.
Oh, good. Like, we do, I mean, we're based on, like I say, quite a few areas and different portfolios. And we've based it on discussions with quite a few officers. So like I said, we try to prioritise and pick the high-risk areas and activities anyway. So, yeah.
Marouf, was that your hand going up or you just swinging your glasses? Okay. In that case, can we approve this report? Yeah. Great. Thank you. And thank you, Linda, for waiting.
Thank you.
And then we go on to item eight, which is the one with coloured pictures.
Yeah, this is the recommendation tracker that we bring to this committee every, every six months.
Yeah.
Yeah, like you've just noted. I took the report to EMT on the 30th of March. And one of the, the changes they asked, it was Kate Joseph that asked for this actually. It's the first time she's seen the tracker report. She was very positive about it and very supportive of tracking recommendations. So so what she did ask was if we could do use a RAG rating. So that's what I've done. I've, I've included red, amber, green in there. So the green ones are the completed recommendations since the report was last presented to you. The red ones represent the sort of, yeah, the, the, the recommendations where the implementation date has been outstanding over 12 months. So they're, yeah, they're the red, the red, the red highlighted ones. But also what Kate also suggested as well was for the critical recommendations, there's two on that, on that report you've got there. She asked if we could actually nominate as well. We nominated an EMT lead to take it forward. So get to work closely. So you have the recommendation lead within the portfolio, but they wanted an EMT leader as well to take that forward. So that's the two changes that Kate asked for.
Do we know who they are?
Yeah. So the, one of them is for the OMS application review. And that's the housing management system, using acronyms here. And that one is Mick Crofts. So he's leading on that one.
Yeah.
And then the one with software licensing. And that one, the lead for that is Eugene Walker.
Right. Okay. Right, okay.
Yes, the nominated two leads. Yeah.
Okay, sorry, Sarah, before I forget, Eugene did send apologies for this meeting. So can can we include them?
Yeah.
And so the exciting one on page 91, or indeed page 90, about the training, the fraud training course, which has been waiting for five years. Were you going to be able to give us an update today to say they're actually going to be using it yet?
I can give you an update. I did speak, yeah, I spoke to the person that stood in this. It's it's nearly there. I was hoping that they would say, yes, it's gone live, but it hasn't gone live yet. But what it has been, it's been produced. It's been on the test site, it's been tested. So all the all the pop ups are working and the different options to to guide them through the e-learning. It's imminent. So we're talking sort of like days rather than the months and, like I say, five years. But it isn't quite quite there yet. So, yeah.
Could you let us, could you let us know? I'm not sure if we'll have a party, but we'll suddenly be pleased to know when it is finally implemented. Sorry, Angela.
Yeah. Thank you, Linda, for that. And it's really good that, you know, that EMT has, you know, has done the rag and and is pleasing to know that the the CEO is on board with this as well. Because obviously, this is something that we raised a few months back. What I was going to ask was, how are these going to be tracked? And how, you know, are we going to come back in six months and there's going to be things? So there's two questions really. One is how are we going to resolve the the ones that are red or amber, nearly red kind of thing? Because obviously, if this over 12 months and how are we going to ensure that we don't get so behind on issues? You know, because there are things on here that are, you know, four years, over four years old. So it's just, I know that there's several kind of coincidental things that have happened for some of these. But, you know, we can make, you know, we could make excuses for lots of things, but we should really strive not to ever to get to the point where we need to make excuses.
Yeah, and that's something that EMT raised, saying particularly, the the new chief exec raised. So what she said she wanted to do was assess what each portfolio has got in place to track recommendations. So, for example, Mick Crofts mentioned the place portfolio, they've got what's called the recommendation tracker, which is on SharePoint. And that tracks all the recommendations, they get updates, they get reports from the system. So so Kate was sort of quiet, she was, what she wanted to do was to discuss with the EMT members and take it forward as to try and get a consistent approach because all portfolios to track it. Because that the use of SharePoint wasn't in place within all portfolios. So that was what she wanted to look at. So on a future agenda, right, and for EMT, she wanted me to go back and and work through that with them as well to try and get a consistent approach. So, yeah, so that should make sure there's consistency across all portfolios then. And like I say, not just concentrating on the red, they wanted to concentrate on red and the amber ones as well. Yeah.
Is that okay, Angela? Right, okay. Thank you. And, yes, was there a recommendation? It wasn't a recommendation, it was just for us to read, wasn't it? And thank you.
Also, I just wanted to remove, because all the recommendations have been actioned for, it was the Revenue Benefits Centre, Contact Centre and the Automatic Number Plate Recognition Review. So those are, those actions have all been completed now, so we can remove those two from the from the tracker. So we've got two to go.
I'm sure we'll find something else to add.
Yeah, there's always something to add, but.
Thank you very much, Linda. Our next report is item nine, and it's compliance with international auditing standards. Dave or Linda, who wants to do this one?
I'll I'll speak to this one, thank you, Chair. International auditing standards set the standards by which audits have to be done. And one of the things they do is set down a series of responsibilities that have to be discharged by those charged with governance, which at Sheffield City Council is the Auditing Standards Committee. So there's a series of responsibilities that you've got in in relation to things like governance and financial controls and counter fraud and compliance with laws and regulations and and the financial statements themselves. What this report does, and it's it's an information item that we bring annually, is sets down the various pieces of information the committee receive every year to enable you to discharge those responsibilities, so that you can demonstrate that you are discharging responsibilities and you're doing everything you need to do. So we're really taking this report for you, in front of you, so you can confirm that you're happy that what we've put in it is accurate and that you're happy that you are discharging responsibilities.
Any questions? Any dissent? Now, in that case, yes, thank you. We do feel very well supported. And thank you for for putting this for us. And I think, yes, we do understand the way that we are trying to do our work here, although sometimes we may not appear to.
Thank you very much.
No, thank you, Dave. Okay, and our final item is item 11, which is the work programme. And that is, is that you, Sarah?
It's me, Anne, and you. But I'll I'll start. It's just a documentation report, just covering the work programme for this year. So it's everything that's on there that each meeting will cover. The minute it runs up to July, so I will be working on the next work programme for the next municipal year. So, yeah, so it's it's a live document for you to to approve and change where necessary.
Okay, so can we? Can we add to it then for October, I guess? The coming coming back about the special education report? Angela?
Just in terms of what we discussed in pre-meeting, in terms of having maybe having something like a heading to our work references and also what kind of reports we require when we request reports? Because I think we assume that different departments know what we are wanting, but they don't necessarily know what we want to look at. So I think it's very important that directors or managers or whoever comes to write the report understands that what we look at is the how, the processes. The why is important, but I think it's more important that, you know, the sort of the data and the processes are very clearly expressed and and not just adopting or re issuing reports that have been created for other scrutinies and other committees. So maybe we could have it with the work programme, you know, like at the top, and then just put it in whatever request. And maybe if we can agree a wording together, then that is issued. And, you know, with any and then with any specific request for that particular department, so that we don't waste people's time and then we complain that they've done a report that we didn't want. I think if you don't ask, you don't you don't get it. And my yes, my thesis professor always said, the obvious is never obvious. So.
Absolutely. I'll just say that after our pre-meeting, I did write to Andrew and say that we, as I said earlier, we are a committee of KPIs and process and action plans who need to be assured, not reassured. And what we do like to get is, this is what went wrong, this is what we're doing to improve it, and this is the timescale, so that we have tangibles. It's it's not that we also don't want feeling, Simon, but we do need to have nuts and bolts and stuff as well.
It's also how we assess the progress, though.
Yeah.
Along the way. So it's the it's the trajectory of travel. And it's how we assess it, how we know where we stop and where we take stock and et cetera. But I I think it's also maybe important to, although we're not a scrutiny, I remember that, I can't, I don't know if it's exact, but one of the quote that I remember from the training books was what went on was, don't just be critical, be suspicious. And that's our job. And I think offices need to understand that we're not trying to catch them out, it's our job to ask the questions, because we are doing the governance and we need to ensure that that they are doing, you know, we 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 know they work very hard, but we need to make sure, because we are the the face of the governance, we need to make sure that they they are doing what they're supposed to be doing.
Yes. And I think we said we would talk to Gillian and Sarah, just to make sure that we had some, we'd written some bullet points that said, this is what this committee does, this is what this committee wants, so that we 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 get the type of reports that we require as opposed to the ones that people may like to send us.
Yes, I'm going to start putting a document together for you to have a look at, and I'll discuss it with Gillian as well.
Absolutely, yeah. So I think with that, that's our committee over. This is my last committee as your chair. I'd like to thank you all. I think it's been a difficult year and you've been very, very supportive to me through some personal stuff as well as battling through our agendas as well. So Simon, thank you for standing in for me. And Angela, thank you for pushing me all the time. It's 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 good to have that. And just thank you, everybody, because you've all joined in. It hasn't felt like one of those awful committees where you have to keep saying things and covering up the silence of the other members. None of you are shy, are you? So thank you very much. Thank you to all the officers who've worked so hard and kept us going. And I'm hoping to be allowed back onto the committee next year. But whoever chairs it, you know, they'll know that they're going to have a good time. When I first became a councillor and I said I'd like to go on the audit committee, everybody was shocked. The whip sort of looked at me and said, Shaun, nobody wants to go on audit. And I said, well, I do. And for those who haven't been on audit, it is indeed a secret pleasure, isn't it, everybody? Yeah. Okay, have a good summer.
Thank you, Chair, and thank you, all the officers as well.
Yeah, okay. Can I just say thank you to the Chair as well then? Because everybody else gets thanked, but the Chair hasn't. So thank you, Chair. Thank you, officers.
Thanks, everyone. Hope we see as many of you as possible next next year. We don't lose too many of you, so.
No, no. Okay, see you all. Finding you out from your tardies.